Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It is October 9th, 2025, and all three commissioners of the precinct called to order October 9th to be in Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. I will ask to lead us on the pledge. No, we're not going to go ahead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're here today, and county government is, for the most part, operating and providing our services in full despite the fact that there is a shutdown of the federal government, that there is no state budget here at the county, the whole Moncos open for business. At the same time, that happens at a cost, so we have spent $33 million thus far to keep our operations running and to cover the state's bills. And that means the courts are open, emergency services are on, services that support children, the elderly, those facing housing insecurity. Everything's still running as normal. We were able to do that because we've been physically disciplined here in Montgomery County, had a sizable fund balance, which has allowed us to front some of those funds. Many of you know we're one of 54 counties with a AAA bond rating recognizing our fiscal responsibility, but we can't keep spending forever without getting the funds that are needed from the state. And this has come at a cost. We've lost already about $110,000 in interest income, which we would have expected if we maintained the same fund balance. So I encourage everyone to reach out to your state legislators, particularly the state senate, to ensure that they pass a budget as soon as possible, because this is costing us, and that also affects our ability to plan for the future and to provide for all of our residents. We have a 2025 municipal election coming up, if you want to make a note about, which is Tuesday, November 4th. This is the opportunity for all of our residents to vote for state judges, judges of elections, school board members, township supervisors, and borough council members, mayors, giving voters plenty of time to make their voices heard. We already have the ballots now. Anyone here request a mail-in ballot? You got your ballot? You all go into the building or in person. I also have a mail-in ballot at home. About 100,000 people, so.
Are we in favor of it already?
I don't know how many voted, but 100,000.
Return them.
100,000 requested mail-in ballots, I don't know the return numbers. Typically, there's a big, you know, chunk who see if their ballots load out and turn it out right away, maybe that's about 15% or 20% of them, but they have time, so you can still drop it in the mail. But starting in a few days on the 17th, our 18 drop boxes will be open. I've also talked to our team, we're going to make sure those drop boxes are open when the ballots are sent out from here on. But if you have any questions, you need another ballot, montgomerycounty.com, that's directly to our doctor's site, just easier to share. Check that out, and you'll have all the information there of where to get your mail-in ballot, if you need to request one still, there's still time. You have until the 28th, do not wait until the 28th to request your mail-in, that's way too late. It's also, the registration timeline is on October 20th. Frank Dean will be at the next board meeting on the 23rd to answer any questions and give us an update on the elections. Kudos to them, because our mailing ballots have no backlog right now, which is really great, so if you go online and you request a mail-in back ballot, it will be processed very quickly, we'll be able to turn around and get it to you within a few days. So one of the two election issues I've seen in the news, it's important for us to respond to some of this, because we want to give people assurance that our process has integrity, and we're taking the number steps to ensure that. So we have 1,500 poll workers in this election and 390 judges of election. These are people who are the backbone of our democratic process, they're making sure their friends and neighbors can vote, no matter who they're voting for. And there's been some letter circulating from a group which I've never heard about, Citizens Alliance of Pennsylvania, that encourages judges of elections to quote, "Bring the fight inside the precinct." I don't know what that means, but I want to make clear that our polling places in precincts are spaces where there's no campaigning, and we want to make sure that all voters and staff are safe from intimidation. And that kind of rhetoric is totally out of place in our election process, and I think all of our poll workers, those 1,500 people who are making this process smooth for all of their neighbors, don't appreciate that in the precinct. So there's no fighting in the precinct over whether it's, you know, political or literally three tight steps to make sure people are safe and the precincts themselves are free of politics. Second, there was national reporting in a number of different outlets in the country about a potential voter fraud case here in Montgomery County, and I want to assure everyone that voter fraud is a very rare thing. It can happen, but it's individualized, and that's because we have all sorts of safeguards for registration, the bar codes on the ballots, to our audits happening after every election, the two audits, so it's not a widespread issue. It can happen, and in this case, the story's got an individual who doesn't live in Montgomery County, who has voted here despite not serving currently military or even at a college, which are two exceptions in which you can vote when you don't. But if there is a case of voter fraud or potential voter fraud like this, it's up to Montgomery County District Attorney, Pennsylvania Attorney General, which oversees the election code enforcement. And, you know, it's a serious offense, right? Because if you don't live here, you shouldn't vote here. And particularly if you have knowledge of the election process, have done work like training board, because you're familiar with the election laws, that would indicate that you should have a pretty clear idea that you should not vote in Montgomery County. But that would not be handled in our office, that would be handled through law enforcement agencies. But again, what we want to reiterate is that overall, this is very rare, and it doesn't happen a lot in Montgomery County or elsewhere, because most people understand the rules and understand that there's quite significant penalties for those. Secondly, also an issue related to enforcement, totally separate, the topic of trail safety, there was a thorough review of the growth, the use of e-bikes on our county trails in really a number of different settings, and this come up a few different times in our meetings. We tripled the fine associated with e-bike violations in August, and there's a story written about a Monco resident, Adamar Drashler, who broke his neck after being hit by an e-bike, a 3,000-watt motor that could go up to 50 miles per hour, and that happened right here in Norristown, actually very close to the Trail Junction Center, I'll talk about it in a second. And, you know, at the time, police reports said that the other site, the other person was a cyclist, and there was no citation. And, you know, it's been recognized that it's very hard for officers, they just don't know yet how to identify the kinds of e-bikes that are illegal on the trails, so I met with the Chiefs Association, the Executive Board recently, they are interested in tackling this issue and working with us. So we have a number of dates planned, I mentioned October, November, where there will be staff on the Foxon Trails and our park rangers, one with law enforcement on the School River Trail and a number of other trails around the county, to let people know what kinds of bikes are acceptable or not, and the penalties that will be incurred for those who are riding our essential motorcycles on the trails. And, you know, the trails, we are one of the best homes about Montgomery County, you know, they're safe, great for all, families, no matter what age you are, we'll make sure that maintains, that remains the case for everyone. And we actually celebrated the Trail Junction Center, which was really exciting, many years in the works, you can see the groundbreaking, and I think, I wish I wanted to talk about that, I couldn't hold it, but it's going to be a great stop, a lot of tippies right on this beautiful little trail, and a lot of revitalization efforts. Okay, so finally for me, before I pass it on to my colleagues, Tiffany Thomas, who's our new WCOO, is Tiffany here? Everyone, please welcome Tiffany. Tiffany's going to be overseeing the HHS vertical, public safety, which she has extensive experience, coming from both government and outside of government, and she'll be working closely with Lee and all our WCOOs, we're very excited to have you on board, so welcome.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Winder.
Great, good morning, how's everyone doing?
Good.
Doing well? Good. So a couple comments for me, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. A couple weeks ago, I had the opportunity to join Commissioner Mckeja, DA Still, our pro bono attorney, Noah Marlier, and many others to honor the work of Laurel House and their Domestic Abuse Response Team at the Breaking the Silence event. One of the stories that I told in my remarks during that event was, I was leaving One Montgomery, and I was kind of crossing the street to get to my next meeting, and I met a woman as I was leaving the building, and she was clearly in distress, she had a hospital bracelet on her arm, her young child was in tow, and, you know, I could have kept walking, right, and went on about my business, but I took a pause to just ask her what was going on and how could I help. And come to find out, she was at the county because she was looking to file for a PFA. And in that moment, it just is a simple reminder that there are friends and neighbors that are in abusive relationships, and that we do important work here to ensure that residents are safe and really proud of the work that our pro bono attorney is doing, our DA is doing, and then community partners like Laurel House, to ensure that we're bringing awareness to domestic violence and ensuring that no one in Montgomery County has to face domestic violence alone, and that as a county, when people come here during their most difficult moments, that they're met by our staff with care and compassion. And so I'll never forget that, that moment with that woman. I don't know where her story ended, but I know that we had a team here waiting to ensure that she got the help that she needed. So just remember that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and that we all should play our role to be aware of the signs and to help anyone that may be in a situation that they feel like they can't get out of, to remind them that there are resources and they can get on the other side of being in an abusive situation. Also, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Every year, we know that thousands of women in Pennsylvania are diagnosed with breast cancer, that's why I just want to stress the importance and highlight the importance of early detection and treatment. If you're over 40, like me, make sure you get screened every two years. I went for my annual mammogram the last month. In that moment, you know, it's always scary sitting in the waiting room, you don't know what the doctor's gonna find. I left, and I got a call a week later saying I had to come back for a diagnostic mammogram. One of the scariest phone calls to get as a woman, but luckily, I went back for that diagnostic mammogram and all is well, but we know that so many women are not as lucky as I am. And so I just want to stress, mammograms, they don't feel good, but they're absolutely important, because breast cancer is, if it's caught early, it is treatable, and we know that early detection saves lives. Last but not least, we live in a country where women's health care is under attack, given recent policy decisions, public health funding cuts, hospital closures, and more affecting the lives of women in our community every single day. I think about, I had my Max in 2020, he had a pretty traumatic entry into the world, I was in labor for more than 20 hours, 24 hours. I tried to get him out for a couple of hours, only for my doctor to come in and say, "You're not getting him out naturally, we have to do an emergency C-section." And, you know, I think about that moment with Max, and the doctor at the time was an evening doctor, wasn't my doctor, and it wasn't until my doctor came in that I actually, they figured out what the issue was in terms of getting Max out safely. And unfortunately, he came out with an APRC score, that's the score they come out with, you know? Does everybody know what an APRC score is? But it was super low, he wasn't breathing, and because he just had such a traumatic entry into the world. So I say all that not to depress everyone, but to say, I had the honor of working with a filmmaker, Carolyn Jones, in a past life. She has done several films on the US hospital system. The one I worked with her on was Defying Hope, it talked about hospice and palliative care and the end-of-life care, and we've since reconnected, and she now has a new film called The American Delivery, where she focuses on the American delivery system, the impact on women, the impact on Black women, doulas, healthcare providers, healthcare systems, nurses. And we're going to be doing a special screening with Carolyn Jones, who's going to come down from New York on November 6th, right? November 6th, so we'll do a private screening of the film at Montgomery County Community College, we're going to be inviting all community members that care about maternal health to that screening, and then after that screening, we will have a panel led by a few folks that's focused on maternal health here in Montgomery County. And so we'll have more information to come, but if you're interested in learning more, just contact our External Affairs Director, Erin Boyle, or email externalaffairs@montgomerycountypa.gov. That's it for me, I'll turn it over to Commissioner DeBello.
I'm gonna go quick today. Guys offered a lot of good information. So.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Oops, I turned my mic back on. So I guess the only thing I'm gonna bring up today is, October is Italian-American Heritage Month, and I'll be happy to join everyone in Monaco who are celebrating their Italian heritage this month. We all know there is a lot to celebrate with any heritage month, but even, you know, when we look at October for Italians, you know, we've talked about this before, you know, Norristown itself is just one community that was, you know, in the early days was built out, there was a lot of Italians that migrated here to Norristown area and had a lot of businesses and, you know, provided a lot into the economy and actually the formation and building out of Norristown, which, you know, we're grateful for, and like I said, that's just one community here. And probably, where I'm from, a little further north from Montgomery County, there's a lot of Italian communities there as well. So it's great that we're taking the time to honor, you know, great, great population of individuals, as well as, I believe, we don't want to forget about our Polish neighbors as well, because I believe this month is also Polish-American Heritage Month as well. So again, another great group of individuals that migrated here many years, and many years ago, and they also contributed a lot when coming here to a lot of built-out of their communities. So it's great that we're, you know, taking the time this month to honor two amazing groups of individuals between the Italian-Americans and the Polish-Americans. So, and I know we have a presentation coming up in a little bit about our Italian-American Heritage Month, so looking forward to that as well. So I think that's about it right now, so I'm good.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're gonna start with a brief overview from Norristown, Chris. Thank you so much for joining us, they have a facilities plan, which is important for us to hear about in the county seat. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you to Commissioner Mckeja, Commissioner Winder, Commissioner DeBello, and Mr. Saltizia for the opportunity to speak today. Good morning to all Montgomery County residents. My name is Christopher Dormer, I'm very proud to serve and humbled to serve as the superintendent of schools of the Norristown Area School District. As home to the county seat and a large majority of county facilities and services, we take very seriously our responsibilities as school district to have our district represent the excellence of services here in Montgomery County. Today, I'm proud to share an overview of our recently enacted Facilities Master Plan that represents a significant investment in Norristown, in Montgomery County, for the students and families of this great community. For those that do not know, Norristown Area School District serves the municipality of Norristown, East Norton Township, West Norton Township, serving about 80,000 residents, and daily, we welcome 8,000 public school students in 13 school buildings. 13 beautiful school buildings, 13 very old school buildings. Our newest constructed school, Whitehall Elementary School, just celebrated its 33rd birthday. Our second newest building is our flagship, and Norristown Area High School now can get its AARP card, because it just turned out 52 years old. All of our other buildings are between 60 and all the way up to blocks and middle school, which will be celebrating its 100th anniversary in short order. Old buildings are beautiful, old buildings are difficult to maintain, old buildings do not meet the needs of a moment and meaningful educational experience, which is why we embarked on our Facility Master Plan. It was not developed, or excuse me, our facility plan was developed with rigorous analysis and extensive community input. It included a feasibility study and facilities assessment, an enrollment study, a multi-month community workshop process, and eight town halls over a two-plus-year development process. This resulted in the bold reconfiguration and ambitious plan that addresses the full spectrum of our needs. Can we go back one slide? Just so everybody could see. Here are the six phases that have been approved by our school board. First is to complete high priority remediation renovations in all 13 buildings over the next three years. Second, to do a full renovation of the Norristown Area High School and to add new construction addition to housing ninth grade academy. We will address short-term space needs at Coal Manor Elementary School, Hancock Elementary School, and our administration building through a prefabricated construction process. We are going to reconfigure our middle schools and address some community needs with full renovations and additions at the Eisenhower Science Technology Leadership Academy, will be converted into a fifth and sixth grade center from its current fifth through eighth grade configuration, and East Norton Middle School will host all of our seventh and eighth graders across the district. So what does that do with our current blocks and middle school, our 100-year-old building? It is not ADA compliant, it's time to take blocks and down and replace it with a brand-new K4 elementary school, the first new building in Norristown in over 35 years. And with that, we're going to renovate, modernize, and make sure that all of our school buildings are ready to support modern and meaningful education for the 21st century. Since the NASD Board has approved the scope of our plan this past October, excuse me, last October, we've been hard at work at implementing phases one, two, and three of this plan, and I'm pleased to share some updates. First, our high priority renovations focusing on ensuring that all of our buildings remain warm, safe, and dry. This is addressing heating, ventilation, air conditioning, electrical, roofs, doors, and windows. Over $30 million is planned to begin this summer, this coming summer, summer 2026, under guaranteed energy savings agreements with GISA. So the investments we put in will return money back to our taxpayers in the form of reduced utility bills, and we're very pleased to work with McClure Company and Site Logic to do that work in all 13 of our buildings. Taking a look at our next slide, our prefabricated construction additions will address short-term space needs at both Hancock and Coal Manor with additional classroom spaces. Coal Manor will be getting a 26% expansion, about 11,000 square feet. What you see here is Hancock Elementary School, which will be getting about 28% addition over 12,000 square feet, routing 16 offices to our administration building that we outgrew about five years ago, and we are on track for full occupancy through this process in late June, early July 2026. So we are addressing this process literally within 12 months through this prefabricated construction process that we are doing. And if you want to see the addition, would we go to the next slide? Here's a rendering of what will be the east elevation and bus loop entrance, right now there's an ugly chain lens fence there, if you've ever been to Hancock. And you can see the, on the far right-hand side is the existing building, how well we're gonna blend this again, give it a nice, modern aesthetic, but also pay tribute to a beautiful building that is there. The most expansive project is our high school project, we will be adding 58,000 new square feet to our high school, as our enrollment has grown from 1,800 students when I got to the district nine years ago, to now over 2,400 students in the same building. This 58,000 square feet will be a three-year project that we will commence in summer 2026, they'll add 26 new classrooms, and about 8,000 square foot in new athletic, music, and other flexible space needs. Up on the screen, you can see on the left is a schematic design of what we're planning. The light green-yellow is all brand-new construction that is going to be added with a renovated bus loop. If you see the red brick, we're so excited to say we get to use words like plaza and promenade, yeah, all the fancy words, you know, up at our high school. New entrances to our building, you'll see a new outdoor amphitheater, outdoor classroom space in the circle, all of the blue spaces are going to be heavily renovated areas, and all the white spaces are going to get a full modern refresh in our building. And then on the right, we're very pleased to actually publicly share recently what some renderings of the new exterior of the high school is going to look like. This is an enormous undertaking. This plan will take the next eight to 12 years of our lives, and will total approximately $350 million, as we talked about, a significant investment here in the county and here in our, in our school district. Thankfully, the Commonwealth Court has ruled that Norristown is an undefunded district, we'll see accelerated state dollars coming our way. When a state budget gets enacted, as Commissioner Mahica so adequately said, that we're still waiting on, Norristown is looking to get a $7 million influx of additional dollars this year, they'll help pay for all of this work. I'm pleased to share that through all of the additional state money and our local district work on our finances, we've already built the debt service plan for phases one, two, three in this project, and I'm on the record today saying that the first three phases will result in no tax increases to our Norristown residents, and we're investing in this first phase $135 million in improvements to our schools. It is remarkable work of our team, and again, it speaks to the commitment that we have to our children and our families in Norristown and to Montgomery County. We look forward to the collaborative work with our municipal partners as we go through the zoning permitting and land development processes, and we look forward to celebrating opportunities with the county and all of our municipal partners. Thank you for the time and continued support of the Norristown Area School District, and I'm happy to answer any questions or discussion that officials may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you for presenting.
And if anyone wants to see the longer version, this five-slide version was 48 when I first sent it to Gabrielle. I have a lot more pictures to share, please look at the district website, and again, we're happy to share updates as we go through.
That's my new rule, five slides for everything.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I would encourage you actually to meet our Chief Sustainability Officer, Davey, because I'm sure you've got sustainability aspects of the project that we should know about.
We will be in touch soon, because the high school project is getting ready to come to the Conservation Commission very, very soon.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for the opportunity, very much. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Nelly Menes-Arvalo. Better have these six slides on this.
Buongiorno, commissioners and members of the public. Answer someone who grew up with Italian. It is my pleasure to recognize and honor. It is my pleasure to recognize and honor the contributions of Italians in our county. Italians are known for their deep commitment to family, passionate love for food, coffee, expressive use of handrests, maybe that's where I developed mine, appreciation for fashion, and a strong connection to soccer. Their economy and cultural contributions have played a key role in the advancement of both our county and our nation. As you can see, Italians left Italy for many reasons, reasons that mirror the immigrant experiences of many other groups. Many arrived through Ellis Island and settled in urban centers and industrial towns where work opportunities or connections with family and friends were available. Like other immigrant groups before and after them, Italians face discrimination, hardships, and struggles upon arriving in the United States. Their resiliency and strong community bonds helped them overcome adversity and build lasting institutions. Do you know that there is an Italian-American Herald newspaper that features incredible stories, restaurants, information about Italians in our county and the greater Philadelphia area? I was able to get the issue for this quarter, and it was amazing. They have so many information, and if you have never go and check it out, please go and check it out. It is amazing, all of the cultural relevance stories that they have in the newspaper. Italian-Americans take pride in their heritage and in preserving their culture while also being proud Americans. And now, it is my pleasure to introduce our special guest, Mr. Joseph Mirabel, President of the Holy Savior Club, who would like to share a few words.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for helping to celebrate Italian-American Heritage Month. The Holy Savior Club was founded in 1906 by immigrants from Montella who came to Narstown seeking opportunity and community and to preserve the traditions they carried from home. For 119 years, we've honored that legacy. Each August week, we memory the feast of the Holy Savior with a mass and a procession with food, music, and dancing. We carried a statue around and processed up and down Main Street. An upcoming luncheon Monday, October 13th, will be served at our club at 1:00 PM. It's a Columbus Day tradition. Our bocce league has over 300 members, and we have matches every night of the week except for Saturday, rain or shine, thanks to our covered courts. So please feel free to stop by. Most nights, we're there until about 10 o'clock. We invite you to join us for our upcoming Muscles and Clams Night at 6:30 PM, Wednesday, November 19th, and also our annual Bonfire on Saturday, December 20th, at 436 East Main Street, the home of the Holy Savior Club. The bonfire gets started at dusk. Thank you for supporting our traditions and helping us keep this beautiful Italian-American legacy alive. We hope to see you at our upcoming events. I brought my mother, and also Lisa is the financial secretary of the club. With me, my mom's the best bocce player on our team. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gracie Mill, Mr. Mirabel, together with the Commissioners, I'm honored to present a proclamation for Italian Heritage Month and a special commendation to the Holy Savior Club for their contributions and efforts to preserve Italian culture in our county. So please now accompany me to, we can take a picture, and you can receive your proclamation and commendation.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you.
Good morning. One, two, three. Thank you. Yeah, no, absolutely. Just quick, well, one, thank you, Nellie, and thank you for presenting on Italian Heritage Month. Certainly, our communities would not be what they are, the Commonwealth, the county, without Italian immigration in the community, as well as Polish-American community in terms of the month we're celebrating this month. But I will challenge my colleagues to a bocce tournament if you're down. You should join. Go ahead.
I don't know if I'll play bocce, but Joe, I'll say thank you. It was great to spend time at the feast this summer. Thank you for giving me a tour. Just growing up in the Narstown area, I know the Holy Savior Club well and the work that you do to preserve what's special about the Italian community, especially here in Narstown. And for those that don't know, when I was growing up, Narstown Area High School did an exchange program with Montella Italy, and we hosted two exchange students from Montella when I was a kid, and then my brother went for his exchange program to Montella. So just some legacy there, and really appreciate your contributions, especially to the Narstown area. So thanks for being here.
Thank you. So we'll move on to public comments. The first public comment period is strictly limited to the agenda items. Are there any comments?
Yes. David Morgan.
Good morning, Commissioners. My violin teacher from Philadelphia Orchestra was Italian, and I appreciate Italian violins. And also, glad to hear our speaker, Mr. Dormer, mentioned how much he's been doing and building, yet no tax increases in the district. So wow, I'm really impressed by that. Amazing presentation there. So I'm talking about our affordability as taxpayers of some of the items on the agenda for voting, and we have, in general, Exhibit A, and I think maybe going forward, since we're facing impossible deficit, we might hear more about this month or definitely next month, how to put limits on things, and so perhaps saying not to exceed every once in a while certain amounts so that we keep control of expenses in Exhibit A when new proposals come up. And then in Exhibit B, page two, that's hard to understand, Tri-County Community Network of Pottstown is doing some work in Narstown, and I wonder what the three, two other counties are, if I could explain what this group is. So if you have an opportunity to explain that to us, it'd be good to know. Then on page three, we have a large carpet expense for this building. So I noticed that there's not much by the elevator, so whatever can be done to economize on that, it's already awarded. But I also look at page four and see a large figure of $463,496 for a contract renewal for Onbase and Court Pro Software. So it seems really high compared to the expenditure before, $25,000. So I know it's different items, different maybe scopes of what's covered, but when you see a large number like that, knowing our budget, it's really good to see what we can do about negotiating a lower price so that... I look forward to presentations about what we can afford in general with the capital budget and the Justice Center because it's coming about eight months since the last meeting, and I know that the Commissioners would like to have regular reports about this capital spending. So perhaps next meeting that'll happen, and that way we can be prepared as taxpayers for hopefully a really good report coming up about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay. Move on to minutes. Is there a motion to approve the September 25th, 2025 meeting minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved. Moving on to a resolution, I'm just going to ask for the motion right away. That's okay. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number One as described by, Resolution Number One?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. I figure we're all in favor of submitting funding applications in general. Thank you. Moving on to Commissioners' appointments to the America 250 Commission, is there a motion to approve appointments as described by Resolution G-2?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second? All second. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Moving on to Commissioners' appointments to the Montgomery County Plane Commission, is there a motion to approve appointment as described in Resolution G-3? So moved. Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The appointments are approved. Tony Brew, Chief Human Resources Officer, will present the personnel list.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shout in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated October 8, 2025, with a timestamp of 1:09 PM. Opposites have been reviewed and accounted for for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the October 9, 2025 personnel presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The personnel list is approved. Thank you. Moving on to Exhibit A, is there a motion to approve the advertisements, bids, and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit C?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? I'll just make one comment, which is that we have an RFP in here, as mentioned yesterday at the Trail Junction Center, seeking proposals for nonprofits and public entities for short-term business and programming to support the activation of the Trail Junction Center. So that's going to be a location where hopefully we have some food vendors and other activities, and this RFP will help find those organizations and nonprofits. Anything that might be of use or of interest to trail users or people in the community, please, you're encouraged to apply. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The RFPs on Exhibit A are approved. Moving on to Section J, is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit D? So moved. Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The contracts are approved. Moving on to Section K, is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The contracts, or sorry, the RFP in that case. Moving on to awards of contract for Exhibit D, is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit D?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Comment. The contracts are approved. Moving on now to general public comment, limited to three minutes, and the comments must feature Maryland County businesses.
Mary Beth Smith.
My name is Mary Beth Smith. I am a resident of Skippack, and the very first thing I would like to say is I want to second Commissioner DeBello's call to have the financial report put out before the election so that all Montgomery County residents know what is coming before the election, given the fact that you have gone on a spending spree and a staffing spree recently, and we are very definitely expecting tax increases. Beyond that, I would like to point out that I'm here today because I took off time from work because you continually hold these meetings during the workday, and you've been asked about that, and I've heard nothing that will remedy that. So that is a great inconvenience to the vast majority of working people in Montgomery County. At the last meeting, I noted that three Montgomery County residents and American citizens spoke up with regard to illegal immigration issues. They were very well-prepared, they were very articulate, and they were very factually correct. The first lady cited your Inquirer op-ed, and she basically nailed you to the wall on all of the facts that you used in the op-ed. Now, it became really apparent that neither of you wrote that, that it was probably talking points from some consultancy that you hired, because you went on to say something like, "Oh, it could be a trillion" about the economic benefits of illegal immigration to the county, which is absolute nonsense, and anyone can go online and find these stats. So you dismissed her. One of the other people that came up was actually a retired law enforcement officer speaking about ICE and pleading with you to actually follow existing law. Now, I might be wrong here, but I believe you took an oath to the Constitution to follow law, and it's not up to you, once you're placed in these positions, to just decide which laws you intend to follow. So you also dismissed him. The third person identified herself as a legal immigrant, and for her trouble, she was told, again by you, that this isn't a debate, and almost inferred that she was being racist. And I believe the lady was probably from Southeast Asia. That's how she identified herself. So you were, you want me to take my time back? Your demeanor, your behavior was antagonistic, dismissive, unprofessional, and rude. This strikes me as a clown show. I can't believe this is how Montgomery County operates. You go on about your family. Guess what? A lot of people didn't get to see their mothers when they died because your party locked down the county.
Just stop.
I won't stop. Don't tell me what to do. You know what? Your job description is you are a public servant. You are a public servant. Works for us. We get to tell you what should be done. I know my time is up.
Next comment.
They interrupted me. She interrupted me.
Rose Gannon? Rose Gannon?
How about that? No, I'm right, too.
Good morning, Commissioners and fellow citizens and residents of Montgomery County. I'm Rose Gannon, resident of Worcester Township. On August 19th, 2024, Montgomery County issued this press release, and I quote, "Montgomery County has announced an historic investment in its public defender's office after approving a significant expansion to its team. The county will immediately seek to hire 15 new public defenders and several non-legal positions, including support staff and social worker." The release goes on to say that this alleviates the the burdens on current staff, but also aligns with the national standards for public defender workload and staffing. Budget items to support prosecution, defense, and housing of criminals and those charged with crimes have increased a total of $17.8 million since last year. Spending on public defense alone is $3.8 million over last year, or a 43.7% increase in spending for public defenders. In addition, $7 million was approved for more spending for the correctional facility and district attorney needs. This is an increase of 9.5% for one year. This press release was careful not to disclose the exploding crime rates in our top 10 largest municipalities. The FBI data, crime data, shows that just since 2020, violent crime is up 69%. Motor vehicle thefts are up 137%. Larceny theft is up 69%. Property crimes are up 65%, and homicide and aggravated assault are up 38%. This increase in spending to defend, prosecute, and house criminals and those charged with crime is not a cause for celebration in our county. The dramatic increase in crime since 2020 has a direct negative effect on all law-abiding citizens. Rather than focusing our efforts and our funding on this, on crime prevention and deterrence, we continue to increase spending to help meet the needs of the ever-growing population of criminals. There's a lot of smart people in Montgomery County. Let's work together to find ways to reduce the fear and intimidation of law-abiding citizens.
Thank you.
My time's up.
Ed Moy?
Next comment. I'll save all my response for the end of the comment period. Go ahead.
Ed Moy?
Good morning. Ed Moy, I was here at the last meeting. I'm from West Norrington. And I'm speaking on pretty much the same issue as the last two people. The policy about not assisting ICE, we've, I don't know if you guys have been paying attention to the news, but if you had, had your eyes open, it's easy to see what's going on. How about the ICE facility that got shot up and that killed two migrants? Someone, a sniper shooting at ICE facility in Dallas. How about the officers, the ICE officers in their vehicles that got boxed in by 10 other vehicles and they could shoot their way out of this thing? Because one of the people in one of the other vehicles had a rifle, got a weapon on them. How about the Des Moines, Iowa school superintendent who had a deportation order, got hired by Des Moines, Iowa, the school district there? When the officers came after him, he let him on a foot chase. They caught him. He had a weapon in his car and $3,000 on his person. Illegal, already a criminal, and he has a weapon with him. Do we really need these people in our country? Really? To break more laws like Mrs. Gannon said here, to house them, to provide for them? Do we really need this in our country? How about a couple of years ago, Rachel Moore got killed by Victor Hernandez, 23 years old, and that was in August of 2023. But in February 2023, he executed a home invasion on a woman and her nine-year-old daughter, assaulting them. And before that, in January, in El Salvador, he killed a, he killed a young woman before fleeing to the United States. And we want to house and provide for these people. I don't understand it. We should be backing these officers. So that all they're trying to do is get the bad people out. I don't get it. I don't get it. I'm that law enforcement officer that this young lady spoke about. I hesitate to say this, but when I first got on the job in 1982, one of the older guys, it was the typical old grizzled veteran, all this guy needed was a cigar and a five o'clock chat. And he says, "Kid, come here, come here, kid. Listen, listen to me. All you need to know is one thing." I did not listen to him. This is what he told me, though. He said, "All you need to know is one thing, and you'll be fine." People are stupid. That's it. You'll be fine in this job. Like I said, I didn't listen. I evaluated everyone on their merits, everyone that I encountered my 20-plus years on the job. Thank you.
David Morgan?
David Morgan of Ambor. And I mentioned last meeting about the parent and infant, like that infants included, resource guide, and I'm glad that they're still on the table here. And I'd like to make copies so it doesn't cost the county anymore. I have access to a color copy or distribute these. So many people would be blessed by having all the information. I think in addition to that, having information about prenatal vitamins and diet would be really good for our county residents. As Commissioner Winder mentioned, having a successful pregnancy is really wonderful and that we can have from the very start. And our Manko Mama's program helps that be facilitated with people who may be associated with the medical system so well. So I am wanting to save money by copying this. So if anyone has any comments, let me know if I shouldn't. But I noticed on page one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven are pregnancy resource centers or similar services. And also the fathers are mentioned in page six. And beyond that, related to the domestic concern mentioned early in the meeting, there's domestic trauma help, a lot of the pregnancy resource centers, there's actually trauma groups, and the fellowship of helping each other out. So I really commend this effort, and I will look forward to eventually maybe in November, National Adoption Month, the aspect of adoption, having a child so that someone else could have it for adoption is a wonderful thing. I know people are hoping for that in the county. So just want to commend you in having this parent and infant resource guide available. Thanks very much.
Armina Taylor?
Good afternoon. I think this is about the fifth meeting that I've been here in person. And I keep thinking about how do we meet this moment of civility again? It is so uncalled for, to get in a public space and directly personally attack people that are supposed to be representing a governing body. I want to, I think about Tom DeBello. Tom DeBello and I knew each other when I would advocate at Springfield School District for students. I didn't necessarily agree with Tom, but I never disrespected you. We only had personal conversations. I never disrespected you. And it's possible to have opposing views and be respectful for people that are supposed to be representing who you are. You represented the school community of Springfield. And even now, I will still go up to you, and I will hug you, and I will speak to you and speak to you respectfully, even though I may not disagree with your vote. But that's your right. I would never do that. So I am asking the Commissioners to consider a process that in the 1950s Dwight Eisenhower used to bring Congress together, and it was called the middleway approach. And it was a means to bring people that have differing views and concerns together to find a middle ground, a middle way. And I just want to implore all of you to think about some groundbreaking conversations that this county can have across this county with county residents, and attempt to try to employ the middleway approach. I am so disconcerted about how we treat people. And listen, I'm Puerto Rican and black and white. I got in a fiery spirit, but I preserve my energy in a different way. And I've grown through my mistakes. I've grown through my tactics of trying to advocate. And recently, I have been threatened because I took stances on issues that someone else didn't like. And all I did was I paused the threat. I didn't respond. I didn't text back. I didn't respond to the voicemail. If we don't take a moment to really start looking at each other as human beings and really find a way to be respectful to one another, people are seriously gonna get hurt. And there's consequences to that. There's consequences to your spirit. There's consequences to the law. So I implore you guys to look at how we can do better in Montgomery County and be groundbreaking for the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marilyn Muir on Zoom. Marilyn, can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Marilyn Muir, Lower Salford Township. I am responding to the health information presented by the Democrat Commissioners and Dr. Alvin Wang at the September 25th Commissioners' Meeting. My information is taken from the Independent Medical Alliance, specifically the experience of Dr. Pierre Corey and Biomarker Research owned by Springer Nature, which includes peer-reviewed research by Doctors Paul Merrick and Justice Hope. Dr. Corey is an American critical care physician and is a co-founder and president of the Frontline COVID-19 Critical Care Alliance. Corey asserts that COVID-19 vaccines are deadly and debilitating bioweapons that have caused widespread injury and death. He claims that a majority of his patients suffer from long vacs, chronic conditions triggered by the vaccine, and that 70% of his patients develop chronic fatigue syndrome after vaccination. He argues that the medical system has failed these patients by mislabeling vaccine injuries as long COVID and offering inadequate treatments such as physical therapy, which he believes worsens their conditions. Corey continues to treat patients for what he calls vaccine syndrome and advocates against booster shots. A September 2025 study published in the journal Biomarker Research titled "One Year Risks of Cancers Associated with COVID-19 Vaccine: A Large Population-Based Cohort Study in South Korea." Researchers tracked the patients for one year. The vaccinated group was tracked following vaccination. The results showed a statistically significant higher risk of cancer in the vaccinated group, including prostate, lung, breast, colorectal, gastric, and thyroid cancers. Another article titled "August 2025 Study Defines Mechanisms of Post-MRNA Vaccine Turbocancer." Peer-reviewed research from Doctors Paul Merrick and Justice Hope links COVID-19 mRNA vaccines to turbo cancer. Dr. Paul Merrick, chief scientific officer and co-founder of the Independent Medical Alliance, describes what doctors and nurses around the world have been seeing since 2021: more aggressive cancers affecting younger patients and returning with a vengeance in people once in remission, often within weeks of a COVID-19 booster shot. The paper, co-authored with Dr. Justice Hope and published in the Journal of Independent Medicine, takes a term often dismissed as internet-hyperbole, turbo cancer, and backs it with a detailed biologically plausible model grounded in tumor biology, immunology, and vaccine safety signal data. The disinformation advocated by Ms. Winder and Mr. McKeja is reckless and irresponsible.
Thank you for your comments.
Targeted in the reporter newspaper.
Next speaker is Andy Ladisio on Zoom. Andy?
Hi, thank you. My name is Andy Ladisio, and I am a, I live in Lafayette Hill. I'm speaking today, I didn't plan to speak, and I didn't plan to attend, and I accidentally caught some of this meeting. And I'm just astounded by my fellow community members and the attitudes we have towards others, and also the attitudes we have towards our government officials, like somebody else said. Right, exactly. And I can see people being inappropriate in the room. And I just want to share with people that those who are immigrants or those who are being targeted do have people who care about them and their community. And I really do appreciate those who are taking seriously the fact that people are being, you know, kidnapped on their way to work, which happened yesterday morning, from their schools, children being, you know, used as bait for their parents, all of which are happening in our community. And I understand that there's questions about the legality of individuals being here, taxes on resources. And I really appreciate that this Board of Commissioners is working to figure out how do we balance community needs for citizens and non-citizens alike. And I just want to say thank you for the community support. It's much needed right now. And just letting people in the room and people present, not present, rather, know that there are people who care about this community and really want it to come together and are working towards that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Okay, so that is it for other comments. And I appreciate those of you who spoke about changing the tone, because it's always, it's always nice when we don't have to be the ones to say that, but people stand up, given that they see some of the inappropriate behavior that comes up in this context. I'll just note, you know, very factually, we've invested a significant amount in public safety, in the DA's office, in a number of realms. So whoever it was that made the claim that we're supporting criminals or whatever it was is just blatantly false. And our investment in the Public Defender's Office was an investment in ensuring the constitutional right to counsel, which was in question after a thorough report came from the University of Pennsylvania, which suggested that we were not adequately funding the office and that people who need to be able to protect their rights were not given adequate support and resources. So that's what we did. So I think that was an important move. Today on the Salary Board, we have a number of folks in the DA's office and in the Defender's Office that are being adjusted with their salaries after our negotiations with the unions as well. And that's all part of our commitment to making sure the whole, the system as a whole is operating in the way that it should. And, you know, we've spoken on immigration a number of times. I think it's interesting to note that even looking at the localized number of what it would cost to engage in mass deportation, I think whoever the commenter was last meeting said $200 million was her number, even taking that, if I was given $200 million, I would spend it on addressing a mental health crisis. I would spend it on some of our infrastructure, parks and trails. I would probably spend it in many different places rather than taking people from the grocery store and detaining them. So that's just my view. Someone can disagree with it. Someone can run for office. We're not in the ballot this November, just so everyone knows. I think that was a little unclear, too. But any other closing comments?
Yeah, I would like to apologize to the woman that I reacted to about my mother. For anyone that's lost a parent, I lost my mother in April 2024 to COVID. And I want to apologize for lashing out, because that is a reaction that I worked so hard to not have when people say things that are downright hurtful and disrespectful. You can disagree with my politics, right? We all have a place of disagreement. We on this board often disagree. Us as two Democrats, the team will tell you, we often disagree. But I have the receipts on all the great work that this board has done to ensure that Montgomery County continues to be a great place to live, work, and raise a family. So I'm just gonna hold on to those receipts and hold on to that work, because each of us on this board of us on this board, uh, did take an oath. Um, and we take that oath very seriously. And no one on this board, I can assure you, is doing anything that isn't within our right as elected officials, um, is not doing anything illegal. And, um, I just want to make that clear. And I, uh, want to echo Carmina's sentiment. I have been calling for civility, um, and trying to model that. Um, but that civility is a two-way street. And I'm always willing to break bread, have conversation, have thoughtful disagreement. But in order to have that disagreement with me, it's going to have to be done in a thoughtful and respectful manner. Um, our kids, the generation coming up behind us deserve much better than what is happening in our society right now. So I want to implore anyone that wants to come to this board room, that there is a level of decorum that we collectively expect. Um, and we have a responsibility to show up differently as friends and neighbors. Um, so I want to thank you all for, uh, listening and, and coming to my TED Talk.
Thanks. What was the last part? Coming to what?
My TED Talk.
I like that. Um, so a couple of things. One is, again, you know, they, Mr. Morgan, I always appreciate when you get up and ask good questions about the budget and all that. Um, it's, as you know, it's a very complicated budget, there's a lot going on. Um, and, um, there's things that I always do agree with, things that you bring up, you know, when you bring up items, but then there's also in the budget where, you know, the operating budget in Montgomery County is about six hundred and fifty million dollars, right? So sometimes we do see large numbers, uh, but when you compare it to a six hundred and fifty million dollar budget, it's not as large as one would think because we're, it's a large county. Um, but you bring up a lot of good points and I, I want to reiterate, um, you know, as I said last meeting, we're working together as, you know, to try to figure out the best way we could approach twenty twenty-six. So, um, your comments don't go unnoticed, um, but we do work very hard to look at, scrutinize everything. Um, there may be things that, that we may not agree with on the budget, uh, in twenty-five or twenty-six or twenty-seven, I mean, uh, but we're going to continue to do what we can to, uh, do what's right for Montgomery County. Montgomery County from a budgeting standpoint, just organically grows, the, the expenses grow between three and four percent a year, just organically. And that's, that's your healthcare costs, your cost of goods, salary increases, contractual salary increases. So, and that's just historically an average growth and, and, and a lot of governing bodies, no matter what you do, you see that growth, right? So we have to weigh that and then we also have to look at additional programs and projects and so on and so on, and try to do what's, what's best for the county to continue to be, you know, the amazing county Montgomery County is. So I don't want you to think your comments, and you, you go unnoticed, uh, because you, you bring up a lot of good points, uh, when you're looking at the bud, uh, expenses per each meeting, so thank you for that. Um, I'm kind of upset, I just found out today that, Carmina, you didn't agree with me in the past on some things? I'm like, I, I'm like, I'm sitting here and I'm like, I'm, I don't know what they, how to even respond to that. I'm like, I know, I'm only, you know, I always kid you. I, I've known Carmina for I don't know how many years now and, and she's right, there are times when we, we don't agree. Um, and that's okay. And, you know, I, I, you know, I, I've said this before and I'll say it again, I don't mind when people come to a, a Commissioners' Meeting and they have passion about whatever they're speaking about. That's okay. Um, but let's not confuse passion with, with other feelings. Um, and, you know, there's many times that there are people that have come up to the, to the podium as well and make, make comments and statements that, um, I don't agree with. And, um, and sometimes it's hard not to respond, to sit there and, and really not agree with, publicly agree with. Uh, but, you know, it's, you know, we, we have people that come here all the, every, you know, a lot of meetings, uh, and they bring up from their perspective, uh, what they are passionately feeling. Uh, and, uh, right, wrong, or indifferent, you know, people sometimes show passion differently than others. Uh, so I encourage people to continue to come to the meetings, I encourage people to continually get up and speak their passion, um, because I don't want to become a governing body where we, where people feel that they can't come and, and talk about what they feel is important to them. Um, and we as a Commissioners try to do everything we can to be respectful. Um, and it's important that, um, we continue to work as a board to, to look at every angle, every position, every, um, you know, uh, fodder idea that the community has and figure out what's best for Montgomery County, but we're not always going to agree. Um, and that's okay also. And I, I know it was brought up, we've tried to have night, uh, uh, night meetings, um, it's, it's hard to schedule them, but we're hoping that in two thousand and, what year are we in? Twenty-five? In two thousand and twenty-six, we're actually getting ready to prepare our meeting calendar. Um, this was something I feel very strongly about, that we have, um, meetings, even if it's, you know, at least once a quarter. Townships are really excited to have us. Um, so hopefully as we're planning out the calendar for twenty twenty-six, we're able to get out and have our meetings at least quarterly into the communities, because I know the people really, really enjoy it, they really appreciate it. And it is hard, uh, to get here in Norristown, uh, Thursdays at, uh, ten o'clock in the morning. So that's my, would you call it a talk?
TED Talk.
Huh?
TED Talk.
A talk. So.
Well, we'll update in a little bit. The TED Talk, what'd you say? We'll get a briefing on that. Okay. All right, you have your comments. Um, okay, we've had our next Commissioners' Board Meeting will be Thursday, October twenty-third, in the boardroom. As I mentioned, the Director of Elections will be here, Frank, uh, to talk about what's happening in the election. And with that, uh, is there a motion to adjourn the October ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Assembly Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
We invite Commissioner Winder as a second.
Second.
Standing by Commissioner Weller, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned, that's how we're moving now with the control. Okay, we'll hear from Mr. Tony Brew, Director of Human Resources. Presentation of the Salary Board List.
Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board List. It is a five-page document dated October eighth, twenty twenty-five, with a timestamp of one oh nine PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the October ninth, twenty twenty-five Salary Board presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew, Chief Human Resources Officer?
So moved.
We invite Commissioner Winder as a second.
Second.
Standing by Commissioner Hart, any board comment?
So, um, the only comment I'm going to make was going to kind of be weird, I think. Um, I see the salary range for the Information Technology Officer, CIO.
Yep.
We may have to, as a board, consider, I shouldn't say this.
Say it.
Bump it up?
Oh, well.
Because, um...
Say it again.
There's, there's been many positions that I did not agree with, uh, so, but, I'm coming out of the industry, spending thirty years in technology, um, you know, and the way technology is advancing, um, I think that for us to be able to be competitive, to pull somebody that could really do amazing stuff here in the county from a technology standpoint, which ultimately if they are good, will save money.
Definitely.
So...
You can apply online.
I can apply. I, believe me. But I, uh, it's, it's something, it's something for us to monitor.
Yeah. What's, what's a reasonable?
Well, I don't want to say publicly, but I think it's something for us to just look at, that, you know, as we, as we go down this road, um, we may have to rethink strategies as far as what that position is and how we can handle it. Because like I said, if we hired the right person, no more than save us, uh, their salary even more, sure. If they don't, then we didn't get the right person. I'm sorry. I'm saying it.
Yeah. Look, I generally agree with that sentiment in terms of recruiting people who are the best, you know, that we can get, um, it, it does save money. If we can innovate, especially in the IT space, there's a lot of costs where things are going to change. So, I mean, I, I think Tony can probably go forward and...
Well, yeah, we can start more.
Although if you're going to, however, you're not going to get certain people to apply.
Right. So I just, I just wanted to be real.
If you have something to propose or if they want to come back if they need to, and then you can...
Yeah. We'll take a look at it. Well, I don't want people to think this is a bargaining chip either, because, look, I've been, I've been, I've been down this road and believe me, the salary, the person that we hire needs to be able to have the stuff to be able to collect the salary that we would give them. So, and, and I'll be able to sniff that out real quick.
I'm sure you will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So don't think that people could just come in here and negotiate and, you know, no, it's, it's got to, they got to be really important.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, so we should figure that out. I mean, in the past, we didn't even approve it again before it went up and we just put it up and then approved post-fact, so...
Okay.
Maybe there's a way to adjust it. And then when it just comes down to the final approval, we can change the number if we do. Then, um, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay. With that, is there a motion to adjourn the October ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
We invite Commissioner Winder as a second.
Second.
Standing by Commissioner Hart, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks.